We're live and now recording.
All right. Good evening. The purpose of tonight's meeting is the annual board reorganization. I would like to call this meeting to order. Katie, please call the roll.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Here.
Mr. Frank? Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Ms. Carrie Nikas?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Here.
Sachi Mehta?
Here.
Carly Meltzer?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent, and two student board reps this evening.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome our guests and visitors this evening, and the first item on the agenda is an informational item. The board should have received a document one, which is the board membership list. It just lists all the board members, their terms and information. And the next item on the agenda is the selection of a temporary board president. We will now accept nominations for temporary board president.
I nominate Ronnie.
Hearing no other motions, we will now accept the motion to close nominations.
Second.
Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Nominations are duly closed. Ronnie, thank you very much. You are now the temporary president to proceed with the rest of the meeting.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the selection of the board president. We will now accept nominations for board president.
I nominate Amy Ginsburg.
Second.
Hearing no other nominations, we will now accept the motion to close nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nominations are duly closed. Can I have a motion and a second to accept Amy as board president?
So moved. Second.
Congratulations, Amy.
Is there?
Oh, we have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote.
President. Oh, you say.
So there's been a motion and a second if we could all just vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Amy.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I take over from here then. Right, right. All right, I will now accept nominations for board vice president.
Nominate Joe Antonio.
I second. All right, there's been nomination for Joe Antonio as vice president and a second. Are there any other motions? All right, seeing none, I'll close nominations. Can I have a motion to approve Joe Antonio as vice?
You have to vote to close.
Oh, vote to close? Oh, okay. All those in favor of closing nominations? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then we will now need a motion to approve Joe as the vice president. Second. Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, now we will open up for public comment. All right, I have no blue sheets. Katie, is there anyone online? There's no one on Zoom for public comment. Okay, great. Then I will need a motion to adjourn the reorganization. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Katie, can we go ahead and have roll call again? Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Here.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman? Ms. Carrie Nikas?
Here.
Dr. Morris? Mrs. Ginsburg?
Here.
Sachi Mehta?
Here.
Carly Meltzer?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent, and two student board reps. Great, thank you, Katie. I think we all agree we were only going to do the Pledge of Allegiance once, so we already did that. Welcome to our guest and anyone online. Looking at our agenda, we first list out our prior meetings. On November 1st, we had a work session. November 7th, we had a regular public board meeting. November 16th was the MCIU Board of Directors meeting. November 21st, we had both a policy committee meeting and the Board of Racial Equity Oversight Committee. And on that same date, the North Marco Joint Operating Committee also met. Our upcoming meetings on December 12th, we have an audit committee meeting, an Act 34 hearing, and our regular public board meeting. On the 19th, we'll have our Board of Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And on January 9th, we will have another regular public board meeting. This evening, we have two presentations. Our first one is the Wissahicken High School Monthly Highlight.
Okay, so first, we had our fall drama this in November. It was called Prelude to Kiss. I don't know if any of you guys saw it, but it was really well put on. I went to see it. And so, yeah, I think a lot of people really enjoyed it. It was funny, so it's always good to see. And then for Veterans Day, we had students of our National Art Honor Society decorate all the doors of teachers and faculty and staff of just people who have served in the military. And then we also had our camaraderie group sing as well and have a show for the veterans. And then I also wanted to mention our, a club called Indian Culture Association put on our Garba event, which is like an Indian cultural dance. And that was actually really well attended. There was, I think, over 150 people from around the district, other schools, and a lot of students came to support. So it was, it was really nice to see that everyone was coming to learn about it.
And in the spirit of Thanksgiving and the holiday season and giving back, FBLA had a food drive and within the first week got over 100 donations, which is incredible. And Wissahicken High School Student Council collaborated with the middle school's Ambler Youth Alliance, and they also hosted a Thanksgiving food drive, and it's always cool to see the high school collaborate with the middle school, so that was nice. And the Wissahicken High School Student Council also organized a door decorating contest for Thanksgiving, just in the spirit of gratitude. And if any of you saw the doors, there were some really impressive doors. My personal favorite was Mr. Happy's, which was like a big picture of his face, which I liked to see. And this is weird to say as a senior, but seniors and their families need to make sure that seniors have their caps, gowns, and tassels ordered. I hope so.
Thank you for that update, ladies. Are there any questions or comments?
No, thank you for sharing, and it's so great to hear all the great things that's going on in our school communities.
All right, there's no other comments. Thank you again. And we'll move on now to our second presentation, which is our SEL quarterly report. Thank you. This evening, we have Ms. Latour, our Director of Equity and Cultural Responsiveness, here to share a quarterly update about what our district is doing to focus on social and emotional learning. Thank you so much to Ms. Latour for being here and for presenting and sharing out all the wonderful things that our district is doing. Thank you so much for providing me with this opportunity to present a social and emotional learning update. To get started, a lot of what we have an opportunity to see in May is going to be featured here on this presentation just at the very beginning. The most important is for us to acknowledge and to recognize that we do have a SEL Steering Committee in place. And so this is a committee that is formed from K through 12. So we have staff members from K through 12 involved. We have principals, directors, the assistant superintendent, and superintendent are all members, along with my co-chairing the SEL Steering Committee. Dr. Blair is also a co-chair. Last time, we highlighted SEL and its definition. I included that here just for purposes for us to have that clarity. In terms of SEL defined, we are always looking at it being an integral part of education and human development. And it's that process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply that knowledge, skill, and attitude toward healthy development of their identities, managing emotions, achieving personal and collective goals. As we look at our Castle Wheel and SEL competencies, we heard from the high school today in terms of some updates. And a lot of what was shared actually encompasses the five social and emotional learning competencies that you see here. All of them align with the Pennsylvania Career Ready Skills, which are social and emotional learning progressions that focus on supporting the development of student competence in these areas. I include it once again, our belief statement. We believe, again, as you look here, you can see clearly that a part of our belief statement is the experience of creating a culture of belonging and dignity for all that are here. And so as we look at our social and emotional learning and our attempts, we are insured and continue along with our district's vision, mission, and shared values, that they center the SEL work that we are doing. This photo is a photograph of the Blue Bell Elementary Field Day Fun that they had. This is a part of the "You Belong," and it's one of our September SEL themes. Last time in May, we had an opportunity to highlight some of the things that our teachers themselves stated as benefits. I brought along three more just to kind of keep here. You know, as we look at our staff, we want to also see that they acknowledge and understand the benefits of employing social and emotional learning. So during our May SEL update, just as a reiteration, we discuss SEL, its benefits, and its classroom application, along with next steps. So as we look at the benefits of SEL, again, researchers have documented the importance of caring teacher-student and student-student relationships and fostering students' commitment to school and in promoting academic success. Here we can see some elements again of SEL in action and what it looks like. In school across our district, we are looking at establishing expectations and routines, our morning meetings, opportunities to revise work, reflection, feedback, critical thinking skills, leveraging literature, problem solving, focusing on metacognition, voice and choice. These are all elements that we see throughout elementary and secondary when we talk about SEL in action. This photo is a photograph of Mr. Daniel, second graders at Shady Grove. This is what during Diwali, they made paper lanterns and learned about Diwali. Again, as our students construct, they're creative, they're innovative, they're collaborative. And again, these are all a part of our social and emotional learning competencies. So it gets to what are we doing now? And so some things that we've done, again, revised the code of student conduct to include in a better social and emotional learning competencies. We are launching a social media campaign, and that's basically to respond to students' needs and concerns and to further develop their students' digital literacy and citizenship skills. We're going to continue to develop an intentional K through 12 self-focus. We're also going to provide a list of shared SEL resources and activities for all staff. This will be developed by our SEL Steering Committee. We are looking forward to establishing common language across the district. We are focusing on district-wide monthly theme days. Our high school representative spoke to some of the door decorating that took place, so we're continuing along with that practice. We're also continuing with restorative practice training for all staff. We're providing social and emotional learning training for support staff in February. And we are employing currently safety specialists at the high school. We're using our phone hotels at the high school as well in offering more support to new students entering the district and scheduling an AM morning check-in and a PM afternoon checkout at the high school. Based on the information that we've received from students and staff alike, this has been very successful. For our 222023 school year, our SEL Steering Committee committed to focusing on building some type of community to our work by playing common language and shared themes across all buildings in the district. And what you're seeing here is an outline of all those SEL competencies that have been tied and targeted to certain months. And this was a deliberate effort to align the themes to specific months and to ensure that across the WIS community, there's a common thread. So for September, we focused on our inclusivity, "You Belong." October was pride. You'll see a photograph shortly with that. And November, gratitude. And I'm going to highlight some of the things that we did for this month. And then for December, we're looking forward to giving back, and we've already heard some of that taking place. So for October, again, you'll see our SEL theme for "WIS Pride" here. November, our SEL theme of gratitude. And again, in all things, whether it is the SEL pride, whether it's "You Belong" or theme of gratitude, we're looking at the social and emotional learning competencies to really build our capacity, our staff capacity and our student capacity in regard to this. And so we did have an opportunity to have a November social media presentation, which Dr. Dewan will provide more details about during the Assistant Superintendent's Report. But I did state to the students I would have their photographs to share, so I wanted to make sure I kept my word there. At Blue Bell Elementary, in terms of what we're doing regarding gratitude, we have the opportunity to align the sharp qualities with the SEL themes. An example would be attitude of gratitude. Staff is currently recognizing and modeling gratitude and sharing stories with their staff and students. Blue Bell also utilizes a morning announcement to model gratitude statements. At Lower Gwinnett Elementary, we have our buddies here in this photograph. The school community is using monthly themes to design a school-wide project. The school community created a gratitude tree for students to contribute leaves and recognition of staff and someone in their community that they wanted to thank. Reading specialists are also composing letters to nursing homes in their mission to model and embrace authentic projects. This is Shady Grove Elementary. Here we have fifth grade students who have the opportunity to make cards for support staff. On November 11th, Shady Grove also hosted about 50 veterans who are part of the Shady Grove students and staff members' families. Service members were honored with songs from each grade level, celebrating and thanking our veterans for their service. Shady Grove students and staff also discussed the characteristic of responsibility. A point of emphasis was the part of responsibility in recognizing and showing gratitude. For Stony Creek Elementary, we have here the universal expectations and tying them again to our social and emotional learning competencies. The teachers are employing explicit lessons on gratitude. Teachers send home individual cards to students who show the trait of gratitude during the month of November. And so along with this piece where we're seeing the social and emotional learning competencies, again, there is the alignment of the explicit instruction that's taking place in the classroom. At Wissahicken Middle, we had the opportunity to have our eighth grade team create books, and they read these books to elementary students, so we have them curating stories and then sharing them with an audience. Students drafted gratitude postcards to give to elementary teachers to show gratitude. And the administrative team is using gratitude journaling with new teachers, again, ensuring that we're working with our staff and our students in terms of our SEL competencies. We've already had the opportunity to hear some of the great things that the high school is doing. I love this photo. So again, with the door decorating contest, it focused on what are we grateful for, and so they really highlighted that with that contest. There is an explicit use of SEL in the health and PE curriculum. The freshman seminar team is also designing a SEL embedded curriculum. And of course, we want to recognize that we have space period, provides a time to explore SEL topics into Farquharthford community, and that's during that AM/PM check-in, checkout time. So the next question is simply, what will we do? So we're planning a district-wide community service. We have our meeting next Tuesday, and we're looking forward to those steps where we have that district-wide community service in place. And again, that will be designed by our SEL Steering Committee. We're also creating SEL activities to share with all staff, and again, that will be developed by our SEL Steering Committee. And we're going to continue to develop and enhance what we have done, what's in place, what's working, and what we are doing to inform next steps. December is a SEL theme of giving back. We've already heard some wonderful things starting to take place regarding giving back, and so we'll continue with that. We do have our student council at the middle school already getting ready to make gratitude jars, which they'll drive and distribute to bus drivers, crossing guards, and so forth. So a lot is underway for December's giving back. Social media and WIS watch. Look for more examples of SEL in action and the monthly theme activities on social media and in WIS watch. Thank you, and any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. So I guess I did just a couple of questions. The check-in and checkout that we have space periods, how long is that in the morning and afternoon?
That's a great question. I'm not certain specifically how long it is. I can ask the students, how long is that time?
Yeah, it's six minutes in the morning and then six minutes at the very end.
Thank you so much.
And what sort of things like can actually be like explored in six minutes?
So there are some questions that are posed with the students, so they may be open questions that'll ask them about different scenarios. I know that at the high school, they're trying to also generate some questions from the students, but it's just focus questions that can provide a quote or statement and really engage them in thinking about that, and that's connected to a social and emotional learning piece. It could be anything similar to what we would see in a classroom where a teacher has students coming in, and there's a do now or a pre-class activity. It gets them in that framing of understanding that we're a part of a community, we're going to think together regarding this question. We're going to hear from one another in terms of our voice and in terms of our thoughts regarding this.
And is that really left then to that homeroom teacher to come up with those worksheets or the discussion topic? Or is there something like distributed on a weekly basis to the teachers and says, you know, this is what you're supposed to discuss this week?
It's an excellent question. So Dr. Blair worked diligently to construct a lot of the prompts so that the homeroom teachers would be able just to access that. As the high school team continues, they also want to make sure that they leverage the students to add some of those questions to it. But what is wonderful here is that you had the opportunity to see what was created, so they had a lot of models or exemplars. So when we ask students to kind of share an example or something, it's also leveraging their expertise, leveraging their knowledge and understanding, and having them a part of that.
And the main question was, you mentioned community service. What sort of projects do you have in mind?
It's a great question. So I do not have any projects in mind. I'm going to allow the SEL Steering Committee to come up with them. What we're looking at is partnering with the Giving Tree, so they'll be our guests next Tuesday. And what we're going to look at are some things that we've heard across the district in terms of building needs and so forth. So we're going to really invite in the ideas from that committee to see what they're looking forward to. We're also going to revisit our mission and vision and shared values to ensure that what we're doing is actually meeting that greater need. And I think as we engage in that conversation and really determine what it is that we're trying to accomplish with that project, we'll be able to determine what we're going to look at in terms of some of those ideas.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a few questions, but before I fire away my questions, wanted to ask from the student's perspective, how do you feel this initiative is going overall?
I think it's going very well. The morning and afternoon check-ins are always fun, I think. I especially like the afternoon ones because there's no like, although I do like the guided prompts, the afternoon just gives us the chance to do like a whole class check-in, how's everyone doing? So it's a little less structured, I would say, which I personally like. But yeah, I don't know. Sachi, anything to add?
Yeah, I think I would agree with Carly about like, because in the morning, there's either like a video or a quote that we're discussing maybe like pairs, and then we discuss as a class. And then in the afternoon, it's just like, what was one good thing about your day or one not-so-good thing about your day? Like, what are you looking forward to? So I think it's just like an open discussion, and I think it's helpful because it's at the very beginning of the day. It's like 7:30 in the morning. That's early. So I think it's nice to just kind of ease into your day with those like six minutes and then kind of ease out of your day with the six minutes instead of just kind of like, all right, let's do some math right now, then. All right, let's go home right now. So I think it's really nice to ease in and ease out of your day.
Thank you. Awesome. So thank you for the presentation. Very informative. Now that Dr. Blair is out on medical leave, is the interim principal sitting in for her, or do we have another interim co-chair for the moment?
So at this time, I'm working through the committee, and we have the members there that are pretty much forging ahead. So during this time, I'm just working as that co-chair, and we have a wonderful committee. So several members that'll be working with me and continue to collaborate on ideas. In terms of the principal sitting in that role, the interim principal, I do not believe that that interim principal will be serving that capacity.
Oh, great. And then, you know, you mentioned there's some really great anecdotal examples that you shared with us. Is there any kind of structured quantitative methodology that we're going to kind of capture back, how things are going, and kind of see what our trends look like over time?
That's an excellent question, and you know, there's so much research out there and conversation about wanting to capture the quantitative to see like, how is this working? What does this look like? And I think in terms of our Belonging Climate Survey, that'll give us some of that qualitative feedback. But if we're looking at the correlation between students' sense of belonging and when they do, that sense of agency has a direct correlation to their academic performance. So we should begin to see notes of changes in terms of what they're doing regarding their academic performance. So if those correlations of this, of what we're doing in terms of actions, eventually, we should see that that sense of belonging, that sense of community is having an impact too on their social and emotional learning wellness, but also their academic performance.
And are we going to try to look at that quarterly? So we'll have quantitative data to look at quarter? Why can't I say the word? Quarterly?
So that's an excellent question. That's something that will be in discussion about to see what will be the best way for us to look at the data and then to also present that.
And then my, my last question, and this is just me being picky here. How is social and emotional learning and putting your cellphone in a cubby correlated? Sorry, it's just.
Well, excellent. It's an excellent question. And so when we're trying to build student-to-student relationship or student-to-staff relationship, sometimes there are barriers to that. And what we have found is that cellphone and that usage of it, and sometimes unfortunately with some students that addiction to it, has become a barrier to their engagement with other individuals. So putting it away, directing their full attention to others, has been something that's been incredibly wonderful. In fact, at one of our Board of Racial Equity Oversight Committees, we had a student who said, when we're talking, like, my peers are actually looking at me, right? So it's something that they are beginning to observe and notice. So that engagement with one another is so essential, and so our quest is to remove those barriers and to help them to better engage in those conversations with one another and to also build their emotional regulation.
Thank you. And I really appreciate how everything's like 360 degrees. Like, I feel like, you know, it's students, staff, it's the support staff. Like, really nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Ian?
Oh, I bet you read.
Okay, well, no. Thank you so much again for that presentation. All right, so we will now move on to our first public comment period, where we will allow maximum five speakers on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Again, it's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up with responses on our website. I don't have anyone in person. Katie, what about line? There's no one on Zoom. Okay, well, then we will move on from our first public comment here. Katie, we had one hand that just popped up. Sorry. We have Katie Wenger. Go ahead, Miss Wenger.
Okay, thank you. I reside in Whitney Township. I've commented on SEL before, and I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that there are parents that are still very concerned with SEL. And I'm wondering why there aren't any parents on the Steering Committee. I think that would be a really helpful step to get some different perspectives outside of the school building and include the parents in this process that it seems like is heavily embedded in our children's everyday educational experience. I think it's also important that we acknowledge, which has been mentioned before, that the SEL that was originally developed, that program, is not what is being used here. This is transformative SEL, so it's really important that everyone looks into that. And Ms. Latour had mentioned that it is the way that people develop. It's one ideology of how people develop. It is not the science of how people develop. And I was also looking at her mentioning the equitable outcomes, and I would like more information about how that is possible. I know they've talked about several ways they're trying to implement that. But it is very much a concern because it it could take away some of the challenging coursework that some of our students need. Also, it's important to look at the negative evidence of SEL that's out there, some negative outcomes. There hasn't been many long-term studies. And the ones that there are have shown that there has been a decrease in some academic outcomes. I also think that it is not inclusive of everyone's beliefs and values. And the purpose of our educational system is to educate our children on academics. Sounds like a lot of time is being spent doing behavioral training or, you know, focusing on values and beliefs that all of the parents have not been asked whether or not their children, they want their children participating in this. There's still the concern about SEL using staff and faculty that are not trained mental health clinicians in that capacity, which could put some children in a vulnerable position and could cause negative outcomes. And just again to highlight that I think in our district right now, especially with everything that we're seeing, more of the focus should be on academics, not behavioral training, as well as further efforts to decrease the violence in the middle school and high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wenger. Katie, is there anyone else registered?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, well, thank you. Then we'll move on from our first public comment period. And we'll go next to the board president report. It does say there's no informational items, but I did want to share that this past week, some other board members and myself did attend a listening session at the high school. It was great to meet some of our students and hear what they had to say about their experience at the high school. And I'm looking forward to some future sessions, again, listening sessions, and having that opportunity to listen to some other students. I think we have another one coming up in January, right? Yes. And then action items. So David is not going to be continuing on as our North Monco rep. How many years have you been on, David?
This will be the end of my full three-year term. I think before that, I was on for another year, finishing out Ron Stoloff's term.
Okay, so around four years. So thank you so much for your service on that board. Very appreciated. And we're going to be nominating someone new to take his place. So I wanted to open up that discussion to see if anyone was point express interest in serving in that role.
I would be interested.
Zephy's expressed interest. Is there anyone else interested? Nope. All right, so next week, we will be having as an action item to approve Zephy at to a three-year term to the North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operations Committee. And that'll be from December 22 till December 25. Thank you, Zephy. All right, then we will move on to our superintendent report. Jim?
Thank you. Before I get to the two informational items, I wanted to stop the presentation there for a little bit and focus on a particular picture that may have been from the Wessex High School of a club activity. Does anyone know anything about that particular picture, ladies? It looked like it was a fun event.
Oh, the picture in the.
Yes, that one, yes.
I think that was from Spirit Week.
Yeah, yeah, it was from Spirit Week. I'm pretty sure it was like mismatched day. So there was like hats and then like blazers.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't see familiar faces in that picture. Did I? Nothing.
Oh, not.
So my first informational item is a really fun thing that, as you may know, November 13th, the country celebrates world, I guess the world celebrates World Kindness Day. And indeed, here in Wessex, the central office was actually invaded by a large number of third graders and two of their teachers, our very fondest teachers, Ms. Jen Apple and Ms. Carrie Young. And they came to present to us what was originally going to be a kindness rock garden. But due to some things, we have instead a kindness rock basket. And it sits out in the front. It greets visitors to central office. I think it's a fabulous statement, really, a visual statement of what our values are as a district. And it's perfectly in line with the various SEL activities we were talking about. I shall randomly pick out two. Visitors are allowed to see however many they want. So for example, this one says, work hard. That's it. This one's going to go to the top. This is a superintendent's prerogative. It's going to the top. This one says, you're a friend. And these are just nice messages. And if you think about it, what it is, it's it's just being kind. And there's, and it's really, I'm so happy for the two teachers. So appreciative of them bringing the students over. I queried the students on these things and they very articulately told me exactly what they were. I'm convinced. And we're very happy to have this kind of rock basket at central office. So that's the first informational item. The second informational item, you may recall that every district has a health and safety plan that was required of all districts back when the pandemic started. And we all had to get a sense of how we're going to operate, virtual person precautions, et cetera. The requirement to review these health and safety plan plans exists still. We required, all districts required to review them every six months. So we're a tiny bit ahead of time in that regard. We were going to, our last review was in August. But what we're going to do this month is take advantage of that because there's been a request to revisit several portions of our existing health and safety plan. And that's in, those are outlined in document 71. There's a couple of areas where that request or the thought was we would be, do a little more than what CDC recommends. Those two would be if a student or staff member tests or has symptoms of COVID-19, we would now strongly recommend they test for that. Right now, our plan is silent on that. And then also, if a student or staff member tests positive, we would strongly recommend that they tell the school nurse. And right now, our plan is silent on that. So those two areas would go beyond what is recommended by CDC. They might strongly recommend, but currently our plan is silent. So we would be more forceful in our position. One area would be sending notices home when we're notified that a student or staff member tests positive. And now we're silent on that. We have a practice at the K to five level. The office, the local county office of public health does not require that this happen. But the the suggestion is we actually go beyond that and do send home when we're notified. We would still wouldn't require people to tell us if they're test positive. But if they do, so if we have the information, we would send it home. And currently don't do that except for isolated cases at elementary. And then the fourth area, which was suggested, maybe we should, right now, our plan does strongly recommend a student, a staff member isolate in days one to five after testing positive, wear masks day six to 10. We do not require it. And we also don't police it. This class is voluntary. In that area, we really don't have the legal standing to require those things. So there would be no change there. So the first two items would be a change, a little bit, a little more forceful restatement of the CDC recommendation. The the third area would be a little more focused on communication compared to what is required of us locally by the Office of Public Health. And the fourth area, we know change, even though we, there was a discussion about a change. So that is not up for a vote tonight. It's just sort of explaining what's an action item for next Monday, that action item 71 there. But this will serve as our six-month review. We won't have to do this again until, hopefully, until June. But we can adjust this document. It will be a vote. And then if it's voted and approved, I will make the changes to the health and safety plan accordingly.
All right, thank you, Jim. And before I open up for discussion, I did want to make sure. I know at the November meeting, which I was not present at, there was some discussion of proposed changes to the health and safety plan. And you were going to discuss some of those issues with council. And that did occur, correct?
Yes, the, that's a good point. The, we did run all these suggestions by and mention that it was, it suggested at board meeting that we might want to consider these. And our attorney recommends that or has shared with us that while strongly recommending the various things is permissible and maybe even advisable, depending on where you sit, requiring them, going beyond recommending and going into round requiring, takes us to a legally challengeable place.
Okay. Well, let me open this up then for comments. Ian, you want to start it off?
Sure. You knew it was me. So can you explain to me the difference between COVID and measles? Not medically, but legally?
I cannot. I know that there's existing code that requires what we send home or when we have to send home notices. And COVID is not on that list. It may eventually get there. I don't know.
So it's not legal for us to add it to that list? Is that what you're saying, that they said?
A list in terms of of which of these items? All of them or?
No, like, we have the list of like reportable communicable diseases. That is inclusive of many things, many arguably less severe than COVID. So what I'm asking is, what's the difference between like requiring those things to be reported and requiring a quarantine associated with those diseases versus COVID?
I see. Those diseases are spelled out in the statute as what districts have to do and COVID is not.
I understand that. But what I was asking is, could we spell it out like those things? Are you telling me that's the illegal point?
I want to say legal. We don't have the legal right to require those. We could do it and then get legally challenged.
Could someone legally challenge a chicken pox?
No.
Reporting?
Well, they have to challenge it at the statute level, not at our level.
Are you saying the state required versus a district?
Yes. I want to say the Department of Health, PA Department of Health or PA Department of Education or both.
Okay. My my concern, as everyone knows all along, has been trying to protect the most vulnerable in our community. And I guess I'm just wondering, like, is this the very best we can do?
The, I think the answer is, this is what we can do within current legal boundaries. If we were to try to be more forceful and require one or more of these things. Take the communication out because we can't do that. So the other three, if we were to, instead of strongly recommend, instead of that, we would require, there would be, the feeling is, there would be legally challengeable.
Jim, do you want me to step in and add a little?
Sure.
Sure, okay. So as Jim had mentioned, there is, we did go over this with Jim, our office, and made our recommendations on what we should strongly recommend and why we were not requiring certain things. And as Jim mentioned, that's because there is nothing that specifically allows this district or any district to require certain things at this point. There was a six, you may have heard of this. There were six school districts in the state and the acting secretary of PDE that was sued by nine family members in the Commonwealth Court to test their mask mandate. And the court came down with a decision last week and actually denied the petition that was filed by the nine family members as moot because there was no requirements anymore. The six school boards that were sued in that case had long gotten rid of their mandatory reporting requirements, mandatory masking requirements. So the court dismissed it as moot. But if we decide to do, if the district decides to do anything that is not specifically enumerated as something that is, that is, they are, they're mandatory to do, it opens the district up to litigation. And we really just don't know what is going to happen. We probably can guarantee that any and all districts that start mandating things that are not specifically delineated in the law are going to be subject to litigation. And we just don't really know where where it's going to go. One of the things that was argued in the lawsuit that was the court dismissed was whether this, what the school district had under the powers, under the public school code, to have certain rules and regulations that we're talking about now as mandatory. And we were all hoping that the court was going to actually get down and rule on that and say, you can require universal masking, for an example, or you can't. But they didn't even get to that point because they said it's moot because there's nobody requiring these things anymore. So we think that anybody that requires it, whether it be us or any other school districts, we already know some of our districts have already gotten letters and calls saying, if, by the way, if you do this, you're going to get sued. So, you know, just keep in mind, if we go above and beyond what we know under the state guidance, Monco guidance and the CDC guidance and the state guidance, the public health department and Monco Department of Health, they all file, follow the CDC recommendations. And everything over the last six months has gone, you know, back, back, back from where it used to be. So if we go ahead of it, we just have to be aware that we are looking at possibly being involved in in litigation. That's why when we look at this with Jim, all these issues, we made these with, along with Jim, strong recommendations versus saying that you can make this mandatory because there's nothing legally that makes, says that you can make these things mandatory.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can I ask you a question, Michelle?
Sure.
Michelle, you're using the terminology strongly recommend. I haven't seen any definitional support for that. I went online. I reviewed the regulations by OPH, the CDC. Is there any particular reason why we can't just say, we encourage everyone to follow the guidelines as identified by OPH and CDC as opposed to say, for instance, strongly recommended, which isn't, there's no enforcement mechanism for any of these things that have been proposed. And to me, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand where we're going with this because again, it's about potential challenges. What we want to do is use common sense. And I think that this asks people to use common sense, that if they have symptoms, common sense dictates, maybe you should test to see if you have COVID. If you test positive for COVID, stay home. These are all not only common sense, but they are recommended by the CDC and OPH. Why can't we simply state that we will encourage people to follow those guidelines? Because I think that's legal, appropriate, and without any basis for enforcement. I don't know what the purpose of this is, other than there are several provisions that state we are silent or our plan is silent on these issues. I don't think it necessarily changes what people are doing. Just because we're silent doesn't mean people don't know what to do under the circumstances. But can't we just make it simple for people? Because I don't know what strongly recommend means. That's like saying strenuously object to something as opposed to objecting to something. So that's just my comment is, why aren't we making this simple? And saying, we encourage people to follow it.
And we, I think that we came up with the strongly recommended. And then the CDC obviously uses the term recommendations or recommends. We use the term strongly recommended. We were looking at it in terms of what could be mandatory versus what was recommended. You can certainly use the word recommended if you wanted to and not strongly recommended. That was just a sort of a term of art that we were using when we were working with this on, with Jim.
Yeah, I can add to that too, is that that phrase came from the conversation in this room. I think it was in November. That was not a voting matter. That was just a poor conversation.
Could we use the word expect? Expects? We expect you to do these things? Marshall alluded to, there's no COVID police. No one's coming to your house to make sure you're doing this. What, what, my argument is that the district should do right by saying, this is what we are expecting people to do. Now, if you don't want to do it and you're not going to do it, fine, whatever. You do it. You do what you want. But what we're saying is that this is our expectation of the community. This is how we're going to function as a community to protect our students and our and our staff.
I think, I think from a legal standpoint, I would be a little bit concerned that expecting is along the lines of making something mandatory versus recommending that somebody do it, that staff or students do it. That would be my concern with using the term expecting.
Other comments, mother board members?
The only other question I have again is from Michelle with regard to the recommendation of requiring notice if the nurse becomes aware of somebody who tests positive for COVID, even without permission by a parent, do we have a legal basis to provide that kind of requirement?
Well, we, it, it's, there's nothing that prohibits us from doing it specifically. Where in other cases, where we are concerned that there are things that would specifically prohibit us from doing it, you know, it is, COVID is a reportable offense under the Montgomery County Code. Although whether the Montgomery County Health Department is really enforcing that is, is, is another issue. But based on our interpretation of it, um, we, is our opinion that we can send a notice home without notifying anybody of the specific name of the student. And we would not be violating the student's rights, privacy rights, and we would still be letting the individuals that need to know in the classrooms and needs to know that there is a student that tested positive for COVID. Or, so we're very comfortable with that from a legal standpoint.
Thank you, Michelle. Jim, do we know like other districts in the area? Have they made any sort of similar changes that they strongly recommend? Um, or are they using different language? Are you familiar with any of the districts?
Not many have revisited this topic since the beginning of school year. At that time, some may have had words and say strongly recommend, some might have been silent on it. It's, nobody's requiring, to my knowledge.
Right, but I just want to interject. I know there are districts that never took that language of recommendations out of their health and safety plan as we did. So I think that's an important distinction.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So, just so I'm clear, the, the document seven one, as it stands now, will come to, uh, the meeting next Monday for a vote as it, as it reads.
Thank you, Jim. All right, then we will move on to our Assistant Superintendent Report. Dr. Wong?
Yes, thank you. I have three informational items this evening. Uh, the first informational item, I'll provide a recap of the recent professional learning experiences we had. Last school year, we received very helpful feedback from faculty and administrators to help us design our professional development plan for this year. Um, and so this year, the outcome of that has been that we've, we've designed professional learning community, PLC book study model, which included an opportunity for faculty members and administrators to select their preferred text to meet their interests and needs among, uh, from among a list of texts. So on November 8th, on the in-service day, we had our first PLC book study session, groups of approximately 25 faculty members, along with administrators who serve as co-learners. They got together for that opportunity for all of us to learn, engage in meaningful conversations, and really reflect on applying our key learnings to our work. That piece of application of our new learning was a key piece of feedback that we got from faculty and administrators last year throughout our professional learning experiences. Each of the, um, the groups were anchored in the self-selected professional texts and again, focused on the application of new learnings to our classroom settings. We've received tremendous positive feedback about that PLC district book study model. And we look forward to continuing with those sessions throughout this year during the January and May in-service days. Later in the morning on November 8th, faculty members collaborated in grade level teams and department teams to focus on newer or revised curriculum implementation and resource planning. Additionally, some faculty groups got together and engaged in learning opportunities that focus on powerful instructional practices to support all learners with an emphasis on our English language learners' needs. During the afternoon on that same day, November 8th, faculty members returned to their assigned schools and engaged in additional learning activities which were coordinated by and facilitated by their, their building administrators. So just want to say special thanks to all of our administrators, instructional coaches and teacher facilitators who helped to plan and provide the incredible learning opportunities throughout that day. And then I wanted to share and align, and still speaking of professional learning experiences, in the afternoon on November 21st, which was an early dismissal day for students, Ms. Latour facilitated a professional learning session for support staff. And that session focused on creating supportive and inviting work environments where staff can experience a full sense of belonging. As we know, that's something that's really at the heart of a lot of our professional learning experiences. The session was an interactive learning session and helped our support staff explore the importance of understanding and embracing cultural differences in the workplace and what we can all do to improve relationships, communication and work experiences. Before I move on to the next two informational items, are there any questions from the board regarding the professional learning experiences? Okay. Looking at item number two, on November 28th, as many of you know, the district hosted a social media presentation for all Whistaken families in grades K through 12, which focused on parenting in a digital age. Ms. Latour mentioned it briefly as a part of the social and emotional learning presentation this evening. Families who attended joined us in person in the auditorium at the high school. The event was also live streamed on YouTube, so we had many families tune in virtually. The recorded presentation is available on our district's YouTube channel and you can access that at any time. During the session, families learned valuable tips and resources to support their, their children in developing healthy and positive online experiences as they navigate technology and social media usage in the home. The, the following day, on November 29th, middle school students attended assemblies with the same presenter from Dynamic Influence who facilitated an age-appropriate presentation about social media, digital citizenship and digital safety to our middle school students. It was highly informative, but also entertaining. We heard, there are lots of positive feedback from both the family session as well as the student sessions. And the last informational item is to remind the community that tomorrow, December 6th, the district has partnered with Functional Health Center to host a presentation about nutrition in the home. The session will be held here at Central Office, right here in the boardroom at 6:30 in the evening. And it's open to all Whistahicken families, students, excuse me, parents and guardians of students in grades K through 12. During the presentation, families will learn how to support healthy eating habits in the home. This event will be recorded and published on the district's YouTube channel beginning December 7th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. First question, will there be food samples tomorrow?
I have not heard that food samples are going to be in, in the house tomorrow, but that would be fun. But I can't make any promises. No, I have not heard about food.
Logical though, right?
That would be great.
They are going to be talking about healthy snacks. I just can't promise that there are going to actually be any healthy snacks.
I would like to know more about them and taste them. Yes. Zappy, did you have a comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, um, excited that we're doing these events for our community. This is so awesome. Do we know, do you have the numbers of how many, um, families, people attended the live event? How many came on to the streaming event? And then how many people, um, have tapped into like the recording?
I do have the answers to the part A and B of your question. Part C, I'm not sure about in terms of after. But we had about 20, 25 people in person at the high school in the auditorium. And we had about 140 plus, 144 was one number that I heard in terms of tuning in live stream. But I know that there have been many families who've tuned in after that, watching that recorded video. I, I don't know how many. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I know that there have been lots of families who've reached out to say, I watched the recording and it was amazing. So it is definitely something that our families are accessing and we encourage people to continue to access. The presenter provided us with some, uh, links to resources that are mentioned in that presentation. So we'll be uploading that to the district website so that people can access those resources that are mentioned in the presentation as well.
That's awesome. Um, and maybe, um, for more for Kristen, but maybe if we could put this in our like recap so that people know where to find these resources would be nice. Uh, you know, make once, share a lot, whatever the term is, but this is great. Uh, very good work. Thank you.
And how would a parent, if they wanted to find this on our YouTube channel, like how do you exactly navigate that and find it? Thank you for your question. So I went on this evening because I had the same thought. I wondered how will people access it? So when you go to our Whistahicken School District YouTube channel, um, and you click on live, I know this is the way I found it very easily. Just click on the, the live tab where you can find all of the events that were recorded live. Um, so it's pretty easy to navigate. No matter where you are on that YouTube channel, you can navigate pretty easily. This presentation is called Social Media Safety. So you can look for that language and probably search in the search, um, in the search navigation tube on the YouTube channel as well. I found it pretty easy to navigate. So, um, that, hope that's helpful.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Oh, no, well, thank you so much. All right, and you have no action items. All right, then we will move on to our board solicitor report, Michelle.
I have no informational items and no action items tonight.
Thank you. Then we will move on to our board secretary report. Wade?
Thank you. There's no informational item and at next week's meeting, we'll be requesting approval of four sets of meeting minutes, which are the November 1st work session, November 7th, uh, public meeting, the November 21st policy committee meeting minutes, and the November 21st, uh, board racial equity oversight committee, board meeting, excuse me, meeting minutes. So we'll be requesting approval of those next meeting.
Great, thank you, Wade. Any comments or questions? None. Do you want to move right into the board treasurer report?
Thank you. There is no informational item and at the next meeting, we'll be requesting acceptance and minuting the treasurer's report for October 31st per document 11-1.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, thank you again. For me, for our human resources report, Danielle?
Good evening. Tonight, there are no informational items. Uh, for your review are seven action items under 12B. The first two action items include resignations, appointments, leaves of absence, co-curricular postseason pay, extracurricular changes and volunteer additions. Action item three is an addendum to the General Healthcare Resources, JHR, contract, adjusting the hourly rate for nurse substitutes due to the vast shortages. Items four and five are, are staff agreements with explorations for support in buildings and grounds and special education due to the retirement resignation of key administrators. Item six is a proposal from Evergreen Solutions to conduct a compensation study for Act 93 administrative positions. And item seven is a job description for your review. This concludes my HR report this evening.
Great, thank you. And can you just go into a little more detail regarding 12-4?
Sure. 12-4, oh, explorations. So, uh, explorations is a consulting, uh, services through MCIU. We've needed some additional support. We had a supervisor of special education who recently resigned. Um, and we needed some additional support before we could bring on our new hire. So it's a contractor through that service that's coming just to help out the team, um, for a couple of weeks. Up to 14 days. So that's, um, that's one of the contracts. The other contract is, um, to continue with some support, uh, from Jerry Moore, um, to help with, um, you know, buildings and grounds and, and that department while we continue to, uh, do the search for, uh, another candidate.
And how is that search going?
We are still in, uh, the reviewing of application status. So, uh, our posting doesn't close until the 12th, so, uh, I will give it some time. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Actually, item six, I think that's a little more money than we had originally heard. Um, what, do we still want to do that based on the fact that we're not hiring that person? I don't know. I don't know.
I can, I can elaborate there a little bit. That study is for the entire group, not just one individual. So, uh, it, it's a really good idea to periodically make sure that the pay grade for non-union, uh, employees, especially key leadership positions, uh, is in line with the market and prevailing salaries in similar districts. So it would be for all of the descriptions, not just the one.
Okay, so you recommend it as a good idea for this district now. Okay, thank you.
And you looked at other options as well as this company, right? Any other questions or comments? Okay, so then we'll move on to our communications committee report. Zappy?
Two informational items. Uh, the next community update, number three email is going out December 13th and that will include survey results. And then December 15th will be our next community conversation Zoom and that's occurring at 7:00 PM. Jim, will we get a preview before the 13th?
The board will get the results before that goes out. Likely will go out at the end of the day, uh, so it's not disrupt the people who get it in schools. And yes, the board will get it ahead of time.
Thank you. No other items? Great, thanks, Zappy.
I have one, yeah, I have one comment about, the, um, I've been reading all 34 pages of like six-point font comments. And one of the things that, now, I know some of those comments were made before some options were taken off the table, but one thing I just wanted to like make clear was that we're not considering pushing elementary school earlier at, anymore. And I just wanted to make that clear because a lot of the comments focus on that. Um, so I just want to, you know, make that clear.
Jim, I wanted to ask, so I've been hearing from some parents, um, that the video that was played for students, which I did watch myself, seemed more slanted against, uh, starting school like at a different time. How do we go about preparing that presentation? How do we choose what content is going to be? Can you describe that a little bit for the board?
Sure. Um, we're getting feedback, lots of feedback on the video. The video being referred to as, is what we showed to students so that each student got a consistent message rather than relying on the home teacher or the academic teacher to, set the video or the survey up. Yes, we have received feedback the same that there was lots of, of, uh, discussion about the downsides of any changes. Uh, we've received information or, or feedback that said, we're just taking the science for granted and not presenting the other side of that coin. So, um, I think this, the video is, is a little microcosm of this entire conversation that's taking place now, which is, um, actually, this is the same exact reason why we shared all the board comments, all the comments for the board in six-point font, so I brought that part. But because we don't want to, we're trying not to filter any. So, uh, we could have had, uh, more slides or more time in the video on the, the science behind it. Uh, but we led with that as this, we're taking as a, as a, we're, we're actually just sort of stipulating the science because there's been very well researched the positives of either more sleep or perhaps even more importantly, different sleep timeframe for teenagers. But that was said as a given and then with Whistaken specific, we have these downsides that we want people to consider. Yes, depending on where you sit is where you, if you liked the stipulating of the science or not, or the extensive review of the challenges or not. And we're having that same feedback in the, in the website comments, um, survey, video, written communications, the website. There's a lot to this. And, and asking any one of us to distill it down to something that's a four-minute soundbite, uh, is frankly too much.
So Jim, I, I kind of feel a little different about your, what, what the video is of what you're saying. We were not giving facts. It was not neutral at all. So I would suggest you go back and relook at that video with that lens because it was not neutral at all. In fact, my kids told me they felt that it wasn't neutral and their teachers in their homerooms, in their different homerooms, also expressed their negative feelings towards this change, which influenced how they responded on their surveys. So in no shape or form was this neutral.
That was their, that was why we created video. We learned from a previous survey that related to this topic that if we don't present it in a consistent way, that could happen.
No, but the video is not consistently neutral is the point here.
Fair, fair. That's a, that's a, that's a fair statement.
It was almost as though the video was made under the assumption that of course kids are going to vote for more sleep. That's ridiculous. Of course they will. And it never mentioned any part of like higher test scores or less accidents when driving, when teens are driving, when they wake up later regardless of actual bedtime. Um, and it also included things that were no longer true, such as, did you know you can no longer care for your siblings after school because they'll get home before you? And also my personal favorite, you're going to miss more for PIA home games. And I'm sitting there thinking, we can shift the PIA home game time to inconvenience another. And I'm sitting there thinking, we can shift the P I double A home game time to inconvenience another school rather than inconvenience our students. I don't know. It just seems like we were, Zaffy said, just, it was, it was not neutral.
Yeah, Jim, and I think to add to that, I've, I've pretty much unanimously heard everyone that had any opinion that the video was slanted anti any change whatsoever. I haven't heard a single person say that it was like gave too much credence to, you know, the benefits of later school start times. So, I mean, it's kind of water under the bridge to some degree. I mean, the, the video was already played, people saw it, the surveys were already answered. But I think we as board members then, when we see the actual survey results, should take whatever the survey results say with a grain of salt in our overall deliberations on later school start times. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, Jim, I felt like you were trying to say that there's, there's sort of like both sides, like some people saying that it was, the video was slanted negative against later school start times, but there's other people who say the other thing. I haven't heard people saying the other thing. I've heard pretty much unanimously people saying that the video and the way it was like presented to students was pretty overwhelmingly negative towards later school start times.
No, real quick. I don't want to take the, the surveys with a grain of salt. I mean, I think we can all sit here and understand what's best for the students, but there's a huge community at large, including parents and staff and teachers, that have to be considered as well. So I agree that like maybe the student surveys would be off, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I was referring to the student surveys.
Yeah, okay.
Earlier, Sachi, when you were doing your survey, not to put you on the spot, but did you feel like you had adequate information regarding the benefits of additional sleep?
To be honest, I don't really remember watching the video if we did at all. I feel like there might have been technical issues in my homeroom or something like that. But I feel like personally, I had already kind of had a decision in my mind, so I wasn't really kind of looking for more information to balance it out because personally, I feel that I would, the benefits of like having school start later doesn't outweigh like how it is now. I don't think I worded that right, but I feel like keeping it the same personally would be better just because, I, I actually had a question. I don't know if you can answer this, Ms. Morris, but you said we can change like home games, start times, like in, to inconvenience a different school. Can we actually do that?
In my experience, the school sets the time.
Let me answer that, please.
That, I was a coach at a high school, and the home high school can set the time of the game. Now, usually, it is like a mutually agreed upon time, and three-thirty is convenient for a lot of schools because of fussing issues. But there's no reason that, you know, like, for example, Upper Dublin doesn't finish high school, or, yeah, doesn't start high school until seven-fifty. So they get out a little later than us. Anyway, how do they do it? I don't know. You know what I mean? Like, every school sets their times.
I didn't know that. But, um, just in general, I, personally, I thought that it would be better to change. So watching the video, if we did or not, I honestly can't remember. I feel like, I don't, I don't know. I wasn't, I feel like a lot of people, a lot of students have possibly already made up their minds about what they think, or like having already heard conversations from maybe parents or students, people in their community, people in their families. So I feel like they already might have more information, and they're not really looking for more like differing points of view to like sway their side.
I agree. I definitely remember watching the video. But like Sachi said, I personally have had them very consistent, like I know what I would prefer, and so the video didn't sway me one way or another. I didn't see, I mean, I didn't, I don't know, maybe I missed part of it, but I didn't feel like it was overwhelmingly negative. But again, that could just be because I kind of was firm on what I wanted to vote for. If anything, I felt, unless this, this could be wrong, I felt like I was just presenting you with the facts. It's possible there were facts like left out. I don't know. I just felt like I was being presented with all the facts on both sides, and then I was left to make a decision. I didn't really read into it one way or another, but I feel like everyone, you're never going to put something out and everyone agrees upon it. That's not to say that like, I don't know, there shouldn't be changes if it wasn't neutral, but coming from me, and I would say students at large really don't read into that and thinking that they're being swayed because the district just wants to do what's best. So it's just my opinion.
And do you think coming into the vote or the day you made this decision in the survey, do you think that coming into that, like this has been out there for like over a year now, do you think a lot of students came into it already having an idea of which way they were going to vote in the survey?
I'd say a hundred percent.
Yeah, I would say a lot of, a lot of students, whether they're talking to whoever, but a lot of them were like, okay, yes, I want it to change, or no, I don't want it to change. I don't really feel like the video would have changed anyone's mind completely, because I feel like a lot of students know what they want or know what they would have wanted. So I don't think the video would have swayed their minds.
I agree. I think this is an issue that people tend to be very opinionated on.
Yeah.
And so I don't personally think, but again, if there are students that are in the middle that are kind of like, ah, I don't know, let me hear about it, and they're presented with overwhelmingly negative facts, even if they are facts. I mean, people, I mean, I'm easily influenced, so I can see how students would be influenced. But just like from the student perspective, I really didn't feel swayed, like negatively.
Well, thank you so much, ladies, for the input. Any other questions or comments? All right, then we will move on to our curriculum and technology committee report, Holly.
Thank you. She's turned it over to me. This evening, we have no informational items and four action items for which we'll seek board approval at the voting meeting next week. For item fourteen B one, we will seek approval to continue with resorted practices training for the Wissahickin School District administrators and staff. This continued training supports our ongoing priority for addressing discipline disparities in our schools as outlined in document fourteen dash one. Item fourteen B two is to purchase a software package for providing active protection from computer viruses such as malware attacks and breach control. The software continuously monitors the network servers and endpoint devices to watch for vulnerabilities or signs of an external attack on the system as outlined in document fourteen dash two. Item fourteen B three is for the renewal of our teacher licenses for the everyday math instructional resources in grades K five as outlined in document four dash fourteen dash three. And item fourteen B four is for a software subscription service for analyzing student assessment data and district financial data. The software is an important tool to utilize for the annual standardized testing presentation and student achievement and equity dashboards. The proposal is a three-year agreement from December twenty-twenty-two through December twenty-twenty-five in the amount listed per year for ten thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars per year. The district previously had an agreement similar to that, which is presented in document fourteen dash four. That concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? All right, seeing that, we'll move on. Thank you. The solicitor in transportation, Joe.
Thank you. There are no informational items this evening, and for vote next week, we have six action items, and I'm going to ask Wade to maybe give us a quick run-through of these action items, please.
Thank you. So a couple of pretty important ones, and just spend a little more time on those. The first one is, Provenant Energy is the MCIU's approved energy consultant, and we're hoping to get approval to negotiate with Direct Energy through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, for the procurement of electricity sort of as on a fixed basis as opposed to floating. Item two is, we had a bid, and the results are on document fifteen dash one. And the bid, the low bid is James Morrissey at twenty-two-hundred-sixty-three thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-one. On the exciting side, it's item three, which is the total of the contracts for the Wissahickin Middle School Alteration Project, which is renovating the pool project, renovating the pool area to three classrooms, bathrooms, and some spaces. The total bids came in at three point nine eight hundred, three point nine million eight hundred thou, eight hundred dollars per document fifteen dash two. We're very, very pleased to have those bids come in at this amount, which would allow us to stay within budget. The total budget is, was originally presented to the board. I think it was five point one six eight million dollars, and we should come in at or lower than that if all goes well. So again, we're very pleased with those bids. Item four is ancillary to that, and it is contracting for various testings, construction testing and special education, special inspection services not to exceed fifty thousand dollars is the one part, and the second is the HVAC testing and adjusting and balancing, which is the second part for sixty thousand dollars as noted in document fifteen dash three. Item five and six are related to upgrading our technology infrastructure to support additional cameras and then the cameras that we already have. So five is replacing a series of recording video network servers, and six is additional cameras.
Thanks, Wade. Any questions? That's it for the report. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Wade. I mean, it wasn't just you, but to the team for getting that middle school project under budget, because, you know, in this day and age with building and construction, that's really hard to do. So good work to the team.
Thank you.
We need those, those classrooms.
I will pass that along to the team. They were very, very excited, and it's a, it's a great team, and you guys allow us to have that team. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to our finance committee report, David.
Thanks, Amy. Finance committee has no informational items tonight. We have eight action items for approval next week. There's a lot to go through here in my mind. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Coleman, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much. Again, some of it is, is routine. Item one is the approval of the financial reports per document sixteen dash one, and they are listed as such. Item two is our annual approval of the financial and compliance report for year ended June thirtieth and the P D E twenty fifty-seven, and that's part of document sixteen dash two. Mrs. Ginsburg, at the beginning of the meeting, noted that we're having the audit committee meeting. I think it's at five forty-five next week. So the auditor will come in and review the financials, and the board is, and public is welcome to come and ask the auditor any questions, but they'll walk through all those financial statements in support of the documents that are in the board report. Item three is sort of, as part of that, we approve budget transfers for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year based on the audited financials, and also the approval of the commitment of fund balance twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. In the May and June timeframe, the board does an estimated commitment to the fund balance, and then this really is the final commitment to the fund balance. So that sort of closes, those motions close the last year's fiscal, you know, review. And when we go through the audit with the auditor and then we do those motions, that'll sort of put twenty-two to bed financially. Item five already starts the discussion for next year. And the motion in item five is a motion that we did last year and maybe even the year before, but it essentially allows us to tax up to the Act One index, which is stated as four point one percent in the coming school year. So if the board took this motion, we would have the ability to, throughout the budget process, have a zero percent tax increase all the way up to a four point one percent tax increase, and we would have our various budget meetings that we have all during the year, and then in the May or June timeframe, we would pass the budget. The alternate to this would be, we have done an sort of estimated calculation of the exceptions, and in Pennsylvania, you do have the ability to, if you choose to. If you have exceptions, you can authorize the submission of the calculation of the exception submitted to the state, and if they approve that, you can tax to the Act One index plus the exceptions. I am not recommending that. I am recommending staying within the Act One index because it is so high this year, four point one percent. But that's the background to what item five is. Item six is routine. It's spring sport supply bid. It's twenty-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars this year. Last year was twenty-seven thousand dollars, so it's pretty consistent with what we have had. Item seven is requesting the board to approve the in, hiring of Indian Valley Appraisal Company or other appraisals in the support of our defending assessment appeals as they come forward. And in the last month, we have had several larger properties coming back. It is somewhat cyclical, and we had a good run where we didn't have that many, but they're starting to pop up again. So I'm requesting the board to authorize us to hire the appraisals as we need so that we can hopefully win or lose as little as possible as we go through that assessment appraisal, assessment appeal process. And the last one is routine, which is just the approval of the list of payments for the month of October per document sixteen dash six.
Thank you, Wade. I, I did have a question. It's not only a question, I just want to make sure it's clear for those that may be watching at home. Number five, this isn't us saying we're going to tax at four point one percent. It could be, as you said, anywhere between zero up to four point one percent, just so no one watching thinks we're proving a tax increase at this moment.
Correct. We, we are a hundred percent not approving any tax increase, and you hit it exactly correctly. All this would be doing, if the board takes this motion next week, would be any tax increase would be viable from zero percent to four point one percent. You know, sometime in that probably May or June timeframe when we approve the budget.
And we're actually putting in place the max. We know it will not exceed four point one because we're not taking any exceptions.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, though. Because the board, we say, you know, can we try to keep it under two percent or three, you know what I mean? Like, keep it under the max because this is a hard time for a lot of families.
Yep, you would absolutely have the ability to do that, and we would start having our budget meetings and at any and all of those board meetings, the budget meetings, the board would have the ability to indicate where you want to end up.
Yeah, I think the important thing with, if we approve this item, sixteen B five, we in essence say that we will, that we are not going to take advantage of any possible exceptions to go above Act One, which we do this year have the ability to do, probably in the neighborhood of like one percent or more above Act One. So that's number one. That's the max. The other thing is that if we pass this, then the budget development and approval process is streamlined for both for the administration as well as us as board members. So there's definite benefits to approving this for next week. But to Deanne's point, it does not preclude us from, as a board and as a group, publicly stating a goal of what we want to try to get to or below as we do develop the actual budget for next year.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you for your report, David, and Wade. We'll move on now to our policy committee report, Marshall.
Thank you. I have two informational items this evening. One is a recap of the November twenty-first policy committee meeting, and the second is the policy committee meeting summary in document seventeen one A. They are essentially the same as I go through it this evening. We had our meeting to really start the process on the next cycle of the manual review for our board policy. We're in the three-year period that we're doing that, and we're in, we're in year three. And in this year, we are going to be looking at multiple sections of the board policy manual. We're looking at the six hundred series having to do with finance, seven hundred series having to do with property, the eight hundred series operations, and nine hundred series community. And we started in November with reviewing the seven hundred series having to do with property. There were ten policies that were reviewed. Eight of them were for review with some revision. And if you look at those revisions, some had only to do with Um, and if you look at those revisions, some had only to do with either changing uh, the policy number to align uh, appropriately with the group that it needs to be in. Or there was an update to the legal reference. So for instance, um, seven oh two one having to do with recognition of contributions to the school community, including gifts, grants and donations, um, workplace safety. And um, I think there was a couple of others uh, having to do only with those small changes. There were several that did have some changes to them. Um, for instance, um, seven one zero has to do with use of property by staff specifically in this purpose. Uh, in this particular instance, have to deal with district issued mobile phones. Um, seven one four has to do with the disposal of surplus property. Um, and uh, this uh, clarified the circumstances in which the district can dispose of its property. Um, seven one six having to do with integrated pest management goes back to the first two. It's only a legal reference change. Uh, seven one seven has to do with mobile telephone policies and it is revised to clarify the conditions in which district employees may use their district issued uh, cell phones. Seven one eight has to do with service animals in schools and this is revised to reflect the current legal requirements uh, for which service animals are permitted in schools. And that block um, is pretty um, uh, centered and uh, they're pretty. Uh, you can go through them and see that uh, they're pretty laid out pretty well. And then there were two additional policies for review with no changes in the six hundred series, one having to do with grant gifts, grants, donations, the other do, having to do with uh, use of facilities. Um, and then there was one final one, uh, policy zero zero eight, which was a district recommended policy revision. It's an organizational chart. And what that did was it revise, it was revised to include the new director of security position and title revisions for the supervisors of special education and director of athletics. So that is a recap of what we looked at in our November meeting. Um, uh, synopsis, if you have any questions, let me know, but otherwise at the next meeting, uh, I will be seeking approval of the first reading of uh, the policy uh, revisions that we talked about in um, uh, seventeen B one through.
Thank you, Marshall. And I can't believe we're in our third year finally. Supposedly we just started.
It's big policy. It's a lot going on. And I invite the entire district to show up as we bring it all. Oh, and, and revise the rest of the policy.
Marshall, shall we rent out the stadium?
No need to rent.
That's right.
I think everybody's gonna be coming. We're gonna make it free to all who wanna appear.
Were there any other questions or comments? No? Alright, well, thank you again. We'll then move on to our racial equity oversight committee report. Paul or Joe?
Um, Paul wasn't able to make the last meeting, so I'll take uh, this one. Um, we have two informational items. The first is a recap of the meeting that we had on November twenty-first. Um, at that meeting, the main topic was racial disparities and student discipline at Wissahickin. The administration presented data which showed that our black and brown students are significantly overrepresented in disciplinary incidents and suspensions. The administration also discussed their efforts to address potential root causes for this in policy, teacher and staff training and other student-centered factors. And we also discussed plans for the second information item here, which is a community listening session, which will be happening in December. Uh, it's December nineteenth and uh, this community listening session at seven PM at the Ambler Borough Hall is intended to be an in-person event, uh, which will give community members, especially parents, students and staff an opportunity to share their experiences and perspectives on one or more areas of focus for the racial equity oversight committee. Members of the racial equity oversight committee will be there to listen and other board members are welcome to join in as well. A notification went out to the general Wissahickin community uh, last week, um, advertising the event and I think another reminder might be coming out uh, next week as well. There are no action items, so um, any questions on any of the informational items?
As far as advertising it, other than the emails, are we doing anything else to alert the public, like putting anything on the website or on Facebook?
I'm not sure. Um, Jim or Winie away?
Um, I will definitely check. I believe it has been posted on, on social media or and or will be posted on social media, but that is absolutely a part of that communication strategy to ensure that the word is out there for families to know about this opportunity. Thank you. Great. Oh, I'm sorry, one more question.
Yep.
And as far as I understand, we're not gonna have any virtual aspect. It's just in person?
Yeah, this, this session's in person. Um, the, the Ambler Borough Hall isn't really set up for like a hybrid type situation there. Um, so yes, this one is in person.
Thank you.
Will we be able to record it?
No, I, I would say for board members who want to attend, I mean, just let Katie or Winie away or Kaisai know. Um, my understanding was that the, the questionnaire that was there was an opportunity for people to RSVP so we get a sense of overall numbers. And also um, which area of focus is of most interest for the audience that's coming. Um, because there are several that we've been reviewing as part of the racial equity oversight committee. I mentioned last meet, last uh, meeting's topic, which was racial disparities and student discipline. We've also been looking at equitable representation and AP and advanced courses at the high school. Equitable representation, gifted programs, special ed identification, teacher-staff diversity. Um, so a number of things.
And um, do we know if we're able to record the session?
Um, I don't know, Winie, did you guys look at? I don't, I'm not, I don't think we were planning on recording the session.
That hasn't been part of the conversation, um, to record the session. I think the thinking is um, people who are present, we want them to feel comfortable sharing their experiences and sharing suggestions. Um, so I think, you know, certainly open to the board representatives, Paul and, and David and, and Joe. Um, but up until this point, it has not been the intention to record that session.
Can we at least have like a recap or something that goes out to the community if they wanted to? If they can attend, I mean, December nineteenth is a pretty like, not a great date. But right like a week before the full holiday rush, that's gonna be a really challenging time to get people out. So I just wanna make sure that if people wanna get information or understand what was discussed, there's an opportunity for that to happen. So something that can be pushed out would be nice.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, well, thank you so much, Joe. Alright, we'll move on now to our extracurricular report. Marshall?
Thank you. I have nothing new to report this evening. However, we do have an extracurricular uh, meeting coming up later this week, so I'm sure at the next meeting I'll have exciting news. I don't know. We'll find it.
Alright, well, thank you. Alright, next with the MCOIU Board of Directors and Legislative Committee. We haven't had a legislative committee meeting in a while, but um, we did have a board of directors meeting on November sixteenth. And I did wanna share one of the things that was discussed, um, which concerns the Esser Fund. On November fourteenth, the US Department of Education released new guidance that encourages schools to use unspent COVID relief funds to expand various career options for students. Like dual enrollment programs, college advising, registered apprenticeships and industry-based credentials. The guidance reminds districts that they can use Esser funds to expand access to and participation in dual enrollment, participation to those students who have been disproportionately impacted by COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, this includes using Esser funds for tuition assistance and stipends to teachers so they can complete education and training required to meet post-secondary credentialing requirements for teaching dual enrollment courses. Um, so I just wanted to find out, do we have any funds left?
Uh, so we actually do and we do discuss what we're going to do with them. So um, it's actually a more Dr. DeWan's area.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, in the um, the March Board Curriculum and Technology Committee, this will be an area of focus. Looking at those Esser funds, having conversations around what we have done and what we intend to do with the remaining funds. Thank you. Great, thank you. Um, alright, uh, North Monaco technical, Chris and Ronan or David?
Ronnie was globetrotting, so um, I visited the meeting. And uh, um, and so yeah, the North Monaco J O C met um, November twenty-first. Uh, the audit that was presented in the previous meeting was accepted. Uh, we had a presentation uh, on uh, or an update on revisions uh, to the offerings that the school has and, and um, classes that will be uh, phased out and some that are being phased in. Uh, we had a presentation um, on the ongoing uh, work that they're doing. Uh, this was just an update on the challenges uh, of meeting uh, working with five different school districts and five different schedules and, and the challenges and, and what they're doing to, to meet those challenges. And uh, again, that's an ongoing study and, and uh, but there was some brief discussion about how uh, if Wissahickin can change their school start times, how that might affect um, it give them a, an additional challenge in that regard. And then let's see, finally, can't read my notes. But that's all. It's routine business.
David, you mentioned phasing in certain programs, phasing out others. As far as like phasing out and phasing in, are they looking at bringing more? Um, uh, we have never programs, I guess, and students can't get into. So are we looking at expanding current programs or are these new programs?
They're, they're gonna be uh, phasing out their draft and design program. This has been undersubscribed for a couple of years at least. Um, they are developing two new programs. One of them is um, sort of uh, complement to the carpentry and uh, HVAC programs that they have now, which would be uh, it's more of a comprehensive type of uh, education, but I guess that uh, uh, maybe it's not a deep, of, of a dive into each one of those areas, but it, it's called property management. And, but it would cover different aspects of carpentry, HVAC and so forth. Um, and then the other one that they're looking to um, bring in is uh, an information technology with a focus on social media. Um, so, and, but uh, as, as far as expanding current programs, they recently uh, last year expanded the mechatronics program. That had been uh, pretty highly competitive to get into that one. Um, and they usually had to turn students away, but I think this, this year was the first year they didn't have to turn students away because they were able to expand that program. They are limited in space, um, and there's no talk of expanding in, in that regard at this time.
And actually, the property management course you referenced, Deanne, I think you recently mentioned to me in passing about the future demand for carpentry.
Forty percent of our current uh, contractor population, people in construction are slated to retire in the next ten years. It's gonna be a huge issue.
It's great they're focusing on that. You know, like what portion, like property management is pretty broad. Like what portion of that course is actually gonna be focused on carpentry?
I do not. Um, but I, I, I think it would be more like, rather than, you know, construction from the ground up would be more like repairs and uh, maintaining uh, existing structures.
Okay.
I can't give you more detail than that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alright, then we'll move on to our PSBA liaison.
Um, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Then we now are at our second public comment period. Again, we allow maximum five speakers on any particular comment, topic, excuse me. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And again, it's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers, but appropriate, we will follow up with response on our website. No one is here in person? Katie, anyone online?
There's no one on Zoom.
Alright, then we will move on to board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any comments this evening? Alright, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Alright, the motion's been made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, adjourn.